August eighteenth. At this time, I'd like to remind everyone to please sign in and silence their cell phones. I would also like to remind our visitors that in order to facilitate an effective meeting, we ask those who wish to make comments to the board revisit their guidelines, which are found on the table right outside the door, and complete the attached public participation form and bring those to Sarah over here at this table. Public participation is only allowed during the public participation points of the meeting. Other than those times, board meetings are not interactive with those in attendance. Roll call, please, Sarah.
Bannister?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Sam?
Here.
McCallum?
Here.
Here.
Severn's?
Here.
Big Murray?
Here.
Please stand for the punch. Who are able? Max?
Well. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the way, it's on the good foot.
Okay, you have all had a chance to look over the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Is there a second?
Second.
Justin, any discussion on the agenda? This is a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented say aye. All those opposed? Okay, that is approved. We get to meet some new staff. Yeah. Bagby.
Little one. Staff tonight, alright. So they know. Good drill. Come on up. Madison, you're up first. Madison Nelson, yeah, come on up. Alright, so Madison, she's coming on up. Madison Nelson is one of our new school nurses. Look at that, she's got the wave down. We were joking about the dance, but you got that down.
They're in the homecoming parade.
They're in the homecoming parade, okay. So Madison, come on, present. Here we go. Alright, so Madison has been born and raised in Muhammad, Illinois. She also has a daughter who attends the Muhammad Seymour School District. She's a big foodie, loves spending time with her family, traveling and hitting the gym. So welcome Madison to the Muhammad Seymour School District.
And Stephanie?
You're here.
Alright, next up, we have Stephanie. Stephanie and her family also live in Muhammad. Stephanie is fluent in sign language and Brim. It's very impressive. She loves baking, reading, seeing movies, anything crafty, spending time with loved ones and things like that. So welcome Stephanie to the district. Alright, Katie was not able to join us this morning.
She's right there.
Next year.
Nope, nope. Next one. She's Caitlin. Two Kaitlys, two Catherine. There we go, alright.
That's tricky.
That is tricky. It's really tricky. Katie wasn't able to join us this evening, however, she is joining as one of our new special education teachers at MPE, so we're very excited to have her. So welcome Katie to the school district. Thank you. Alright Caitlin, you're up. Alright, so Caitlin Morgan is joining us as one of our kindergarten teachers, so very excited. She's coming to us from Southern Illinois University in Carbondale, where she earned a Bachelor's of Science in Early Childhood Education. She really loves to travel, two Basset Hound Dogs, some cats, some Maine Coons, Hank and Gus, and really loves candle making lately as her craft of choice. So she loves to learn as much as she can. She's been a great addition to the team so far, so welcome. Alright, up next Krista. Krista is joining us out of the pre-K realm, early childhood realm, is taking on second grade for us this year. So she is, she loves running, so her goal is to participate in a half marathon in all fifty states. So how many states have we completed so far? Five, alright. So she is well on her way. She's gonna accomplish that fifty. So anyway, welcome Krista to the district.
He runs.
He runs. He's a runner. We're gonna travel to Lincoln Trail, Ms. Stacy Barton. Stacy is joining us as our new PE teacher at Lincoln Trail Elementary. She's coming to us from Tri Valley, where she has spent several years as a PE teacher and middle school athletic director. She has two children, Blake and Harper, as well, who live in the district. She loves spending time outdoors and making some meaningful life moments, so welcome Stacy. Rock. Rick Keegan. There it goes, okay. Keegan is joining us in third grade this year. Keegan spent some time through the Natural Resources Environmental Sciences at the U of I, really has a passion for environmental education, and now she has decided to join us at third grade. So she enjoys kayaking, camping, all those outdoor things, as well as spending time with her dog and cats and solving jigsaw puzzles. So welcome to the district, Keegan. Alright Suzanne, come on up. So Suzanne is joining us at fifth grade. She's taken a chance at elementary after spending time in the middle school. I'm learning that. Learning that, so she's loving it already. We love to hear that. She's coached cross-country and track, loves walking, listening to audiobooks, scrapbooking and baking. So welcome Suzanne to the district. Alright, to the junior high, Katie. Katie Flood is joining us as our new ag teacher at the junior high. Very excited to have Katie. She attended Blue Ridge School District throughout her high school career, and she is now joining us here, so we're excited. She loves gardening, sourdough and crime podcast, so welcome Katie. Alright, off to the high school. Nathaniel, come on up. Nathaniel is joining us as one of our special education teachers at the high school. He comes with a wealth of experience, special education and Champaign Public Schools and some different alternative schools. He's currently working on his Masters in Trauma Informed Care and Pedagogy, and he loves pickleball and board games. So welcome, welcome to the district. Alright, Rachel Winchell. She is joining us in our Spanish department as a new Spanish teacher. So welcome, yep. Spanish teachers around here, we get the sense. Spent some time as an air force, in the air force, she is an air force veteran. She's taught in Mexico for five years, and she's been a teacher since 2009. Enjoys some outtime activities and enjoying time cooking and with her family, so welcome.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. That, that is, yeah, we can do a big. This is the time when people creep past to leave the board meeting. You are always welcome to stay. But usually when people get to leave, they, I mean, you're welcome to stay.
We won't judge.
You won't judge. Thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, thank you. Have a good night.
Okay, awesome. Alright, item six, consent agenda. So the items on the consent agenda tonight are minutes for the July one, the first open session meeting, the June twenty-first closed session meeting. July twenty-first. Meeting, August fourth, open and closed session, bills as presented, treasures reported, presented, personnel changes as presented, and out-of-state overnight trip requests. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Is there any discussion on consent agenda? That's your roll call vote on consent agenda.
Jordan?
Yes.
Sam?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severn's?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Big Murray?
Yes, okay, consent agenda items passed. Donations, Dr. Lee.
Yes, we've got a few this month. We have a donation to Mom's Pantry at the high school from Ron and Margaret White in the amount of a thousand dollars. The Muhammad Seymour Basketball Association donated to the junior high as well, well as the high school in the amount of two thousand dollars just for an annual donation for facility use. And then Richard and Linda Parnell donated a thousand dollars to Mom's Pantry as well for a total of six thousand.
The superintendent recommends the approval of the donations as presented. Do I have a motion for that?
So move.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on donations? Thank you to our community. Okay, roll call vote on the donations, please.
Sam?
Yes.
McCallum?
Yes.
Rock?
Yes.
Severn's?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Big Murray?
Yes, donations are approved. Communication, I don't see anybody from PTO or MSEA. Anything from Foundation?
No update.
No updates. So let's move into other reports. Board communication, anybody willing to serve us?
I've got a couple things. First of all, I probably should have said this under donations, but if you look at that list, those names are people and organizations that we hear from at least once a year. One or two of them, I'm not sure, we don't hear from more than once a year. And we just have some incredible folks in our district. And I just want to be mindful of that and make sure that they know we appreciate them. Second thing is, you know, we approved the personnel changes. And then I looked at the list of the people that we were either hiring and/or approving for volunteer positions. It made my heart happy because we had some alumni on there. And it was just really great to see people who invested a bunch of years here decide, yes, I'll voluntarily come back and I'll teach or I'll, in one case, as a volunteer coach, that is coming back. And I just think that's super special, and I was just real happy to see that. And finally, here we are with the start of another year, and we're off and running. And a big thanks to everybody that's making that possible. There's some folks in the room that have had a lot to do with that, but there's a lot of folks who aren't in the room tonight that have worked really hard to get rooms ready and to welcome kids, to get buildings ready and to get supplies ready and just get us to where we need to be and, you know, get bus routes figured out and get buckcross figured out, how we're gonna run them short to drivers and all that. So appreciative of everybody that we're off to a pretty smooth start, and that's just outstanding, so thank you.
I would have two things. One, transportation seems to be in a much better place this time of year than it was last year, so kudos to those folks. And if you notice, our cash on hand continues to improve, so give my hat to fiscal responsibility.
Just quickly, wanted to also echo what Max said about all the effort from all the different folks throughout the district to get our kids in the building and everyone having a good time this first week. So really appreciate that. I know that doesn't just start on the first day at school, it's throughout the summer, so really appreciate that. And you do appreciate the board reports from the directors. The additional reports are awesome, just keeps everyone in the loop. I think that's really great. So thank you.
No, I'd just like to add too that I hope everybody has an exciting start of their school year. I love seeing all the back-to-school pictures. It's one of my favorite things. But I really hope that everybody, including us as a board, can find some way to grow in a positive way when times get hard and everybody rolls around and we're definitely guessing things. Just hope everybody has a really, really great school year.
I will just wrap this up and say that the entry to the junior high looks incredible. I'm really excited to finally get to use that. And I'm also really excited about back-to-school season. I know how much energy our teachers are putting into this, and not just our teachers, our entire staff. And so I'm just really excited to be a part of a district that just loves our kids, so. So thank you to all of them. Okay, director reports, we got our, in our board packet, we saw reports from communications, operations, transportation and technology.
Sunny, did we have a public comment?
No, sorry. I'm sorry, thank you for stopping me. Do you have any questions on those different communications?
What I'd echo would already has been said, it's really great to get all the reports from everybody.
I was really impressed with the amount of increase in traffic.
Yeah, that was great data.
Yeah, I loved seeing that.
I really kind of loved the picture of Jill Lager and Angie Pagel dressed up as astronauts to launch the curriculum. I thought that was hilarious, creative, spot on. Loved that. Anything else? Okay. Financial update, you saw the financial update in your board packet. Any questions that Kenny can answer on that?
No, just a question, who prepared all that?
Ms. Smith, because it was closed, it closed out the month of July.
See if we owed anybody a debt of gratitude for our financial reports.
Alright, Mrs. Northrup had her report in there. Is there anything in there that you want to highlight, Christine?
I just wanted to point out, of all the new staff that's in that report, four of those are sort of through our program. Right, so Beth Burdette, Victoria Giles, Genevieve Ramos and Lacey Rogers, either prior paraprofessionals, current professional, paraprofessionals, just simply awaiting license, sure, and one still going through the program. I can't count on both hands right now the number of people that are being hired to go through that program, through various programs with the district's support and come out and be teachers for us right now. There is no way we would be fully staffed to this point without the district supporting that. So I just want to say thanks to all of you, thanks to all the administrators who allow that to happen, thanks to all of our paraprofessionals who swap out positions so we can get other paraprofessionals in positions to student teach. It's a coordinated effort and it's a big effort, but it's really paying off for us, for us. So I think that's, that's just really important to note. We are fully staffed, knock on wood, first time since COVID, first time since 2019. That's paraprofessionals, instructional folks. We are still short a school psychologist, but we've been able to manage that by dividing out some responsibilities across the three school psychs. So I appreciate their willingness, continued willingness to do that. But yeah, we are in the best shape that we have ever been in the past five years, so feeling pretty good about that. And then the rest is self-explanatory. Lots of professional development going on in special education and across the district this year, so. Questions for me?
Good to have you back.
I think we're just all tired.
Yeah, everybody is the first week of school.
Alright, Dr. Bagby, anything you want to highlight in yours?
Just some amazing AP scores from our teaching staff, so kudos and all of our students who've been working hard. Those thirty-six AP scholars with distinction, there were sixteen this time last year, so that is a huge and a significant increase there, and just some very, very impressive scores. So kudos to our students, our teachers for all their work, and then just some pictures from various things as we are getting ready to go back to school or preparing on Institute Day for you there.
It was incredible on the AP report, some of our score averages compared to the state averages.
Very impressive.
Like the fact that one hundred percent of our students scored three or higher on the Latin composition, a hundred percent, like, that's.
Yeah, that's a lot, a hundred percent. Pretty cool.
Any questions for?
I just think if a taxpayer would look at this, they'd get a hell of a return on their investment.
Yeah, they are. We should put this out with our communications. Okay.
That's delivered to taxpayers.
Uh, Dr. Lee?
Yes, just looking forward, on September eighth, we'll have our official budget hearing. At that point too, we'll have an enrollment update as we've gotten, get a couple weeks into school. Also, we've got a document that we talked about last month of our target class size numbers, so we can discuss that further. I know that the board was interested in revisiting that, so we'll have those, what our current process is with that. And then also we'll have Dr. Hensley and Mr. Fisher available to talk to you guys about just athletics and activity. That, that used to occur, I'm told, prior to me, probably prior to COVID in the fall, so I saw that and I think I'd like to bring that back for you guys to just learn more about their positions and what they have going on in the buildings. Also additionally, looking forward, Board of Education professional development at the October study session, we'll be doing the DISC assessment with Jim Art, who's a consultant out of Mattoon. And then just a few policies. Some of it deals with board member development, which is a moot point right now just because we didn't have anybody newly elected to the Board of Education this past spring. So other than that, we're just moving right along. It's been a really nice start to the school year and just appreciate everybody's support.
Any questions for that? Alright, let's move into some unfinished business. So strategic plan update from Dr. Lee, just for some discussion.
I just put in there that we spent Institute Day launching, literally, CKLA professors teachers assisting them as they prepare for our students' first day. Also, Dr. Bagby, as well as Ms. Northrup, have worked together to provide math teachers with six twelve special ed, and special education teachers all day on the twelfth, looking into NCTM's mathematical teaching practices and beginning the work of developing a six twelve vision for math. And then all teachers were trained on how to administer our benchmark assessment. As you mentioned, Mrs. Bryson has a director's report in there with regard to communications. She gave us analytics today in our director's meeting with regard to, to the amount of increases that she's seen in traffic and such. And then we'll, we'll be able to report back to you because as a result of our goal setting with our small goal-setting group of communication being one of those, we'll report back to that quarterly on, on the analytics piece of that. But it is something that, you know, I wasn't aware of until we started interviewing for this position that, you know. I mean, for instance, when I was at the junior high last Friday morning, walking through with Mr. Fisher, and he told Mrs. Snodgrass that, that at that point, they'd had two point six thousand, twenty-six hundred and change views of a post that they put in celebrating that it was their last first day, Ms. Snodgrass and Mrs. Iverson. So to be able to really monitor that, we have an Instagram account that's been started as well, and coming soon will be our first TikTok.
No way.
I'm intrigued. So are you gonna do it? I see you out there doing the dances.
No, not a chance. Never seen that.
I understand that as random as some of those dances look, there actually is a different, there's a correct way to do them, so we'll be judging your technique.
Also, Dr. Bagby and Mrs. Northrup and Mrs. Bryson and I, in our meeting today, they informed me that we'll also be doing a parent, parent square, parent night just to help some people through that as, as some feedback that we've gotten as well. So look forward to that because of the subscription, some professional development came with that. As far as safety, assistant principals have met to finalize reunification materials. Officer Thomas provided various trainings on Alice. Continue with the secured entry. Air conditioning was a challenge the first couple days of school with regard to operations. And then we'll have our, our yearly meeting with our first responders tomorrow morning, although we, since we've implemented our strategic plan with regard to our, our strategic goal of, of safety, we do bring ours in quarterly, but by, by law, we need to bring them in once, once a year. So we'll review the changes that we've made. They're all aware of the changes that we've already made, but just see if they have any additional feedback for us, and then we'll have Mrs. Greer will update any of our plans with that. And then nothing new with technology from, from last month, other than with, with adding the new Chromebook specialist, it's given us an opportunity to, to have people in the buildings servicing teachers more. And Shannon, our new one, has been bouncing back and forth between LT and MPE, and then there's one at the junior high and then at the high school. So there's just been some more support for, for troubleshooting as well.
Couple things under facilities. Glad to hear we're gonna address targets here in the next month or so. That's good, we need to look at that. We're probably gonna have to raise the targets. I don't have any options. Would like to keep the thought of working towards specials on carts here in Lincoln Trail or to free up some classrooms. I'd like to keep that in front of us along, along with moving some potential students into this building to help free up space among the buildings. And I hope we can have that early this year so that next year that can be part of our plan. The other thing that comes to my mind is, you know, when the plan was to add, the original plan was to add on here and add on Lincoln Trails. And we had teachers who have, who have been concerned since we've been in this, in this particular building about travel time, right? And adding on increases travel time, and they had concerns about that. Get that. So the next plan, we went to, well, let's put a two, do a two to three building. And then we heard, well, second grade teachers aren't excited about moving again. And I understand that. I would like maybe sometime the first semester this year to maybe get together with the second grade teachers, somehow, maybe a couple administrators, a couple board members. I don't know, I'm open to how you all think we ought to do it. And just have a chat with them, say, look, we gotta do something. Either we're gonna, eventually we're gonna build on and we're gonna increase travel time, or we're gonna create a two, three building and have to move again, which, you know, kind of, which works best for you guys, really. Because we're here and back, they don't like either, and I get that. To solve the problem, we're gonna have to do one or the other. And when we get ready to craft that plan, whatever that is, I'd like to be able to craft it, you know, as best we can, just, you know, something hopefully they can support. So just a thought, put that out there, if maybe we could think about how we could maybe meet with them and kind of get that input from them because that's an important part. My facilities thoughts for the day.
Thank you. It helps a lot. Okay, item two is press one nineteen. Does anybody have anything that they want to bring up? Because I have something I want to bring up with press one nineteen. It's so great.
It's a great read.
So it is a great, now, you're, you're gonna like this, I think. So if you are able to open it and go to policy two colon eighty with board member oath and conduct, it's page six of the video. And then one of the things that they're giving us an option to do with this, with this update is we have the option to add this information. A board member who fails to abide by the oath of office or the code may be subject to action by the board, including but not limited to formal censure and/or referral to the regional superintendent for removal from office under board policy two colon sixty, board member removal from office. I would like to propose that we add that language to that policy if you guys are.
Yep.
You're reading my mind, Max.
I'm a yes.
Basically, what this does is it, if we were to ever have a board that is looking in the best interest of the board, this gives us an opportunity to explicitly say, this isn't what's gonna happen. In the past, when this has happened, it's been pretty vague as far as like. Um, in the past, when this has happened, it's been um pretty vague as far as like. What you do when you have somebody who's directly violating the code of conduct or directly violating. Um, and so when we look at it, it gives us the option to say yes. Um, or we can say no and leave it without that.
So you'd be handing that ability over to the. Regional superintendent to make that decision.
Who'd have the ability to refer that action to the regional superintendent?
If we don't have the language in there is what he said. If we don't have the language in there, there's a way on which you can do.
So if you do, is there also additional policy regarding like what that process looks like?
No, so typically, I mean, based on what this sounds like, it sounds like it just is really just giving. Teeth to the fact that in that, in a situation where that has happened before, all we've been able to do is just. Reach out to the regional superintendent and he's responded back. There's nothing.
Nothing we can do. But if we have that in policy, then.
I I feel like it still doesn't have teeth if you don't have like the. Refunding policy of like what that process looks like.
I think it has more teeth than what we've ever had before.
I don't disagree. Still vague, I think.
It is vague. I don't know that we can add language. We might be able to, you know, can you how much language we can add about?
No, my, without consulting with an attorney, my my opinion on it would be that that. You guys are all elected officials, so um there's really nothing you can do. Now, certainly, I've been involved in a situation in the past where the board has um given uh. Uh, yeah, they've they've had a a formal resolution of censure um prepared. And um the option was uh resign or or undergo the formal uh operation of the formal resolution of censure. Censure um and um and it never came to fruition because there was a resignation that was involved, but that's my my previous experience.
Does the, out of curiosity, does the regional superintendent get involved with that?
Well, we have seen in in past when there was question with that, um the regional superintendent did not want to get involved with. Um, the the residency issue that we had that that was.
Oh, sure, sure, sure. Yeah.
How we read school code or or how Mr. McComber. Generally speaking.
Attorney's read it that way.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
To be clear.
So so generally speaking, though, um as elected officials, um it's not like, you know, a board of education can vote somebody off the island or anything. Other than if there's some illegal issues that are there going on.
My only concern is that we're elected officials. And if our community voted somebody in. Again, you not disagreeing with the intent of it, I just.
So I think it he, the language right above it. To encourage appropriate conduct, boards may wish to have their policies express potential consequences for violating the oath of of office. Or the code of conduct for members of school boards. Such boards may add the following sentence to the end of this policy. To your point of being an elected official, I think that's different than being elected and then following the code of conduct. So it's one thing to be elected into a position. It's another thing to abuse your power once you get into this position. And this language is intended to say, when you are elected into this position, you have an oath of office to follow. And if you're not going to follow it, we we will. Right, 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 right.
So.
It's not a matter of we disagree, so therefore we're gonna.
Yeah, that that's my worry is like, there's an unintended consequence to it. What if it's in reverse? What if there are six people who are all on the same page and there's one that's raising hands saying, no, no, I don't agree with this. And it's it's an unintended consequence of somebody being left out. And if it's just the code of conduct, then you're referring to, are you?
For school board members. The old and code of conduct.
Yeah, so I I guess what I'm saying is like. Refer to the regional superintendent, who I assume ultimately makes the decision.
Possibly, but I think, I I don't know, I feel like it's maybe it's maybe maybe you don't see it as black and white as I do.
If we have six board members doing bad conduct and going after the one board member that isn't, we've got bigger.
Vice versa, or vice versa, but um. I I totally understand what you're saying, Jeff, like this should not be a, this this language is not intended to be a. Um, you're speaking your mind and I disagree with who's speaking your mind, so therefore I'm gonna censor you. It's it is um when the information that we are discussing in closed session ends up. On the internet in somebody's personal blog. That would be a violation of a code of conduct.
Maybe repeatedly, you know, it's not like you want to give a warning.
So so that that is the kind of example I'm talking about. So I'm not, I'm not saying like. So when you talk about. Sorry, when you talk about who fails to abide by the oath of office or the code, that's not saying um. Who vehemently degree disagrees with. You see, you see where I'm going? I completely understand what you're saying, though.
I just worry about some unintended consequence and if this if the regional superintendent is the one making the final decision, then I don't, I don't have a problem.
He ultimately was the one and he was saying, I'm not.
Quick to interject.
That is true. The regional superintendent and the experience. To jump in.
Yeah, I I like the idea of it, intent of it. I just, I don't know what the steps look like. That's my only hesitation.
I don't know that they know. Do you feel like they would know what the steps would look like?
No, if if someone is repeatedly breaking the code of conduct or oath of office, there would be a resolution that the board could pass in order to censure.
So but before, there was really no.
Morning or something.
Process for that, even though this isn't really. Stating that the resolution has to pass implies that it would be a majority vote.
What is two colon sixty? What's policy two colon?
I'll stop right quick.
Come on.
Board member removed from office. Two thirds of the school board determines that a board member has willfully failed to perform his or her official duties. It may request the regional superintendent to remove such a member from office.
Now, quick, what's two thirds of seven?
Well, and 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 what was the wording? And they don't do their duties, right?
What, say it again, Max, he's trying to shop.
It was not, it was not performing duties, right? It wasn't like.
Right, it wasn't the oath of office.
You can go plaster closed session stuff all over the internet, but you're still performing duties.
You're still showing up to the meeting. What I, what appealed to me about this is that it's a very visual reminder of the importance of your role as a board member. It is a very visual reminder of, we are not on here to push our own agendas. We need, it is fine that you're coming in with different perspectives and different viewpoints. But at the end of the day, you are an elected official and you are here to make sure that you are meeting the same expectations of every other board member around the table. And so I think that's what I like about the language is like, it's just that very like, it's a reminder that's tied directly to that policy. This is why, yeah, I I can be swayed. So if if we are all in, I'm okay with that too.
I I support it. I I don't have a big issue with it, really. Those questions.
So let me um, we can, we can vote. And then, but I need to think about how we're gonna say it. We're gonna say. Um, superintendent recommends the approval of press eighteen, press one eighteen updates. I'm sorry. One nineteen updates um with the answer of yes. For policy two colon eighty, board member oath in conduct. As presented, do I have a motion to do that? Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay, any further discussion?
Um, bef- before we vote, so I looked through this. Were there any other yes, no answers that I may have missed?
Um, I don't know. That was the one that stood out to me, I think.
I don't think so.
But the default ones, I feel like the default.
Every once in a while, we give an option like that. We're not giving one of those.
That was one that just stood out to me just because of past experiences that I felt like it was worth talking about. Great question.
And no, no further discussion.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, so we're gonna do a roll call vote. We have a a motion and a second to approve press one nineteen with the update to. Um, that policy to say, yes, we're gonna add that language. So will you do a roll call vote again?
Yes. Yes.
Severance?
Yes.
Bannister?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Liam?
Yes.
Yes, okay, thank you. That is passed. All right, new business. Consideration and possible approval of a bid for softball baseball dugout events at the high school.
Yes, uh, Mr. Hensley and and Mr. Mills have um worked together to um and with with Ms. Smith. And uh to to put this project out for bid um for quite some time. They've told me of the the need for uh new dugouts at the at the softball. So um, the the low bid for that is a hundred and seventy two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. As they were going through that, um, there is a a need for roof replacement at the the baseball dugouts as well. That the baseball roofs are are losing um shingles. So um, they asked for an alternative bid with that, um, that would have matching metal roofs, softball and baseball. And if that alternative bid is approved or not, um, that is at twenty five thousand zero five zero. Um, one thing that's that's nice about this project is that. This comes from from contributions from from various entities. So um, certainly the school district has some some finances involved in this. Um, but uh if approved as presented, the the boosters have not officially approved it. Um, but uh Mr. Hensley and Mr. Mills have indicated and and certainly anticipate a fifty thousand dollar um donation from the boosters. Uh, Mr. Mills um and Mr. Hensley have indicated that they have twenty five thousand dollars from the Bulldog Open. Um, funds and then also the corporate sponsorship of twenty five thousand dollars from that. So um, if that that would be, that it's my understanding that that would be as as presented. Now, we've had some discussion um about um a cheaper uh or less expensive way to um. Alleviate the the roofs at the the baseball diamond, which wouldn't be matching, but it would be replacing shingles. Um, so I'm I'm hesitant to to say that that would automatically be the hundred thousand dollar donation. Because I think that part of the the attraction to the the whole process was that it it did affect uh both sports. So um.
Matching look is good too, right? Cause it makes a look.
With a little bit of, a little bit about the softball project, though, is that um that would be dugouts. There would be some storage in one of those dugouts um as it's as it's specked out. And then one thing that I'd like to see us move towards, as we did it with the soccer field with the bleachers, is that. Start placing those on on concrete, um just because it doesn't take long before it doesn't look good underneath those bleachers with all of the. And certainly, um, so this is a concrete apron that would be in between the the dugouts as well as you can see.
Some thoughts, one I, and as I speak, please hear me say it, I'm a hundred and ten percent supportive of everything for the softball field. My concern is is on the baseball side of things. Um, and as I say, I just want to make sure that we give a consistent experience to all sports, whether boys, girls, whatever. But the baseball dugout, the experience, standing and and looking at left field, the third base dugout is elevated and you can't see into left field. Those dugouts are smaller and I don't know if there's been any thought given to a longer term plan for the baseball field. So I would like to see us have a longer, what is the plan for baseball? What is that? What does that look like long term? If we spend money to put a metal roof on, then that is the long term plan. And I don't feel like that's something we should do. I think we should take a step back and look at the baseball diamond and say, hey. Can we lower this before we spend twenty five thousand dollars saying this is a plan and that that doesn't feel right to me? Um, so I'd like to approve the softball component of it, but wait and see what can we come up with for a better long term plan for baseball. Um, to make sure that the that experience on softball is the same that it is for baseball. And it, this doesn't feel like it is. Look at the baseball field and the experience that's there. This would be a great experience for softball and I'm I'm all for that. And we have a similar experience. And so I would like to see us approve softball, but not in baseball. Jeff, can you speak more to that? Yeah. So the, what's that? I've been on the field, but I don't think I've been in the dugouts. So if you were to go to the third base dugout, you would step down into it? No, it's on grade. It's all. So what, so you're saying when you're standing in there, you can't see left? You're a spectator. See into left field. So it's, there's a, there is a ball head out there. You have to move and it. Either that or you have to completely shift and that's a, you know, half of the. So from the stands behind home plate? No, from anywhere. From any, from can, from the concession. So if you basically go from the concession stand or or even you have to come around the dugout. So you'd be, you'd be closer to the visitors dugout, the first base dugout. So there's a basically a about half of that area where you can't see into left field just because of the elevation where you're standing. And as you look, the the third base dugout blocks that.
What's the solution to that?
So I'm what, like I'm looking, looking at the picture of the.
Softball dugout lowered?
No, that that's, that's the issue. So if you think about baseball versus softball, most baseball dugouts are lowered.
Can you see the field where the soft, how the softball dugouts are? Still not.
But maybe, maybe not with the new elevation of the roof. I mean, I don't know.
Have we changed?
I was gonna say, there is still some, not as bad as baseball, but there is some visibility, like you have to sit up really high.
Yeah.
On it for softball in order to see the entire field.
If we change the baseball dugouts in the last ten years.
Well, they're newer. I mean, not, I don't know when they were put in place, but I imagine.
Because I don't, they're a lot newer than the softball.
If you look, look at the uh.
I don't remember this being an issue.
The site, the actual site photo, like there's your first base dugout with the brick mortar or uh masonry structure, which is what the softball. I'm just wondering, Jeff, if maybe um. Like there could be some some site work, like some drainage and stuff and maybe build that up on both sides where the bleachers are gonna be put in place to. Be able to see better.
Oh, I see what you're thinking.
Are you talking about it at the baseball field? For for both, cause it it's like there's a a ridge and then it comes down for both. And then the the um bleachers are kind of at ground level if those were elevated a little bit with maybe some site work or something.
That's a good way to think outside the box. I hadn't thought about that at all.
I was gonna ask about it. If they, if we do approve it and they do bury them, like, is that gonna mess with drainage?
So so if we lower, are you talking about softball or baseball? Softball, that's that, those are not lowered in the in the quote. Those quotes came back in at a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars for for just new dugouts. In order to put them lower than you're talking about, now they're retaining walls. And then that's also retain retention on the front, because then you've got to have block in the front.
You gotta put drains in. You're gonna get water and drainage could could become a component of that as well as then you're looking at at ADA.
So I mean, that that would be a whole different ballgame.
I feel like ADA might be somewhat difficult as it stands right now.
Well, that that did not come up with the architectural stamp on this one.
Say more about why you think it's would be.
Again, I've, I'll raise my hand. I've never been to the softball side. I've been to the baseball side a couple of times. Again, where the concession stand is and that ridge dividing two fields, you gotta come down a big slope to. Or not a big slope, but. I mean, and that that's not, it's not long, but it's deep, yeah. So baseball is is better if you, again, I don't know what the ADA says, but if you go to the north. On baseball, there is, it does get flatter. I don't know about on the on the south side of softball field. Again, I think it points to my bigger concern of what is the longer term plan and how much has this been thought out?
I would prefer to raise the bleachers before I go with the dugout. I think you lower the dugout, you're asking for a lot of problems.
It's a pretty standard thing across most baseball fields. Lower dugout. Lower dugout.
Kind of keeps the water out.
Drainage.
Drainage.
Kind of like Louisville Slugger stadium field, I mean, but it's you know, that's a different budget, but.
Yeah, and
yeah, where you come up with steps.
Yeah, being having a son who's played travel baseball for the last how many ever years? Pretty standard. We're not doing any, what I'm saying is have a longer term, well thought out plan. All of those to make it a consistent experience across all of our sports, not just baseball and softball. Again, I think it's a wonderful idea that softball dugouts do need to be replaced. I just think there's needs to be some more time and thought put into what is the longer term plan for baseball.
Thing the challenge we're gonna run into is is.
We're not moving. And that's been.
We're not moving them, but I I just think, you know, it's we hear all the time about how, you know, if you're not one of the key sports, if you're not football or baseball or basketball, you're gonna get you're gonna get a challenge and softball's one of those, track is one of those, swimming is one of those, diving is one of those. Esports is one of those, like, just thinking through making sure that if we're gonna be investing this amount of money, that we're able to invest that amount of money across the board.
Yeah.
And if we can't even get a referendum pass to build a school, it it makes me a little uncomfortable to say we're gonna spend how many hundreds of thousands of dollars to put new dugouts in. When we got kids sitting in portable outside of junior high and we're talking about moving classrooms over here. So like I just, I I don't, I don't know.
I think Jeff's point's well taken, though, just.
I oh, I agree, I think I think something needs to happen, I just am really uncomfortable.
I I think it's like, you know, kinda like wanted to be a part of the process and then you're not, which like I think is fair. Um, we're not involved in all the processes, so but.
But as I mean, again, I would challenge any of you to go and it's it's not what it should be and.
You you think with what I mentioned that there could be some?
If you put stadium seating around there that was elevated that you could get above that, yes. Does that cost?
I don't know, I mean, not stadium seating, obviously, we're not gonna build that, but some sort of dirt work to like bring that level up and you bring those stands up three or four feet, maybe you can see up above, I mean, I don't.
Our softball dugouts typically because I don't want this to become a Title IX issue where we're giving baseball.
And I don't, I would.
Dugouts and we're giving the girls some new bricks.
In my opinion, the only reason to bury the softball dugouts would be to have visibility on the entire field for the spectators.
Well, that's what it sounds like is the issue.
Yeah, I mean, it's both baseball and softball, there's not one good seat except for like right at the right by the concession stand, really. That's the only way you can see, like, even where the bleachers are now for the softball field, if there's a ball hitting left field, like you and you're not sitting in the bottom part, like, it's difficult, you have to stand up and.
You know, we've had seating issues there for years and we probably need to address that. I would prefer we move forward with dugouts and then come back and address seating in some way in some point in some time. We don't have good seating for either side, to your point.
What's that?
We don't have great seating for either side. I think if we were to elevate that somehow, that would help us.
A different main concern is number one, softball dugouts horrible condition, whereas the baseball dugouts are at least functional. But I feel really uncomfortable approving this amount of money to improve the softball dugouts that are, we're just basically getting a little brick house again, right? That's how I understand it.
Be nicer block, but it's still.
A nicer brick house.
A nicer brick house with a nicer roof.
Yes.
But nothing buried or anything like that, and then for some reason we come back in a year or so and then we give baseball all this.
I don't, I don't, I I really don't see how that's gonna be cost uh prohibitive, uh or it would be cost, it would be cost prohibitive, I mean, I just.
I think I I.
I mean, I under- I completely understand um Jeff's point to not wanting to invest twenty five thousand dollars in roofs to have the the matching roofs when we can probably, you know, maybe either Duane can self perform, I talked to him today. Uh, Mr. Andrecky's class might be able to shingle it, you know, that would be uh a cheaper, but um.
I like the matching roofs.
But a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars for dugouts this year is gonna be over two hundred thousand dollars probably next year, and then when you look at the additional work, you know, that you might be at four hundred thousand, you you may you may be at four hundred thousand dollars, so I mean, I don't envision us having, but but the point's taken that that, you know, there needs to be long term, I think the the long term solution uh that those that that was the thought process was was these metal roofs will last forever. But that means that the metal roofs are gonna last forever, right?
That's your, that's your long term.
Right, right, right.
It's what you just said, so we're spending twenty five thousand dollars versus a hundred and seventy two thousand. That's not equal either.
Well, that's because baseball has got a lot more along the way.
But we don't know that, I mean, I I don't.
Well, you keep my like conditioner, they open up with the.
So you could look.
By the well, or by the.
Sheds for both of us.
For the money, for the money that we would spend to do.
And that's okay.
Yeah.
For the money that we would spend to do do baseball dugout slower to the ground, we could come back and put a retaining wall in where the bleachers are, put some fill on there, put a slab in. It would be less money and we'd have a better experience for both baseball and softball.
I love your thought process.
And we've been talking about that for years. And it would be I don't think it'd be, I mean, maybe I'm confused as to what stuff costs these days, but I don't think it'd be a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars to do that, we own the bleachers, for goodness sakes. We need a retaining wall, we need fill, we need a concrete slab and we've got fans sitting up and we've increased the fan experience for both sides.
I I sure there, I think there is a very small bleacher for baseball. Because nobody uses. There it's.
I I think long term, that's solution.
I think, though, in the in the in the meantime, though, I think that next summer, the the discussion will be infield work at both of the both the softball and baseball diamonds and then next summer also, it's time to look at track resurfacing. Um, remember, we're also already replacing bleachers at the the gymnasium at the high school, so it's probably time to redo that gym. I think that that, you know, moving forward, you know, as we continue to to look out for that, but those are the things that are slept.
Can you, um, just to right, can you lay out the process that you had about the different components of where the money might come from? Cuz there was, you, I thought you'd said something like.
So so.
Tie these together, we might not get that or.
Ri- right, so so, you know, boosters is at fifty thousand dollars, the Bulldog opens at twenty five thousand and the corporate sponsorship's at twenty five thousand. I don't wanna commit to that, I mean, that's what I've been told uh originally, but that was also for for baseball and softball. That it was gonna affect both both sports, junior high, high school u- utilizes that, so I'm I don't wanna wanna pigeonhole them that and and it doesn't matter, right, because the the project needs the the softball dugouts, I mean, the ones on the what'd be the first first uh the first base side are are starting to lean back and and, you know, none of us are structural engineers, but done, you know, it doesn't take a rocket science to figure out, that's probably not a good thing, so.
Okay, so um Jeff, are you thinking? Well, off completely on baseball. See what we can come up with and ultimately if the cost is too prohibitive, come back at a later time and approve the twenty five thousand for the.
I would be absolutely fine with that.
Or see if Andrecky's class could help do that now, right?
Yeah, it'll just people will people squawk that they're not matching, but yeah.
Well, I I I think, but I think what I'm hearing Jeff say, and I need you to make sure that I'm saying this correctly, but I think what I'm hearing Jeff say is we wanna make sure that we are addressing the fan experience and kind of what I heard Max say is maybe it wouldn't be as cross cost prohibitive as we might think to raise the bleachers and so should we figure out a way to get the bleachers higher without it being too expensive, we can come back and approve the roof and then approve the bleachers, which affects, which benefits both sides.
Yeah, if you could figure out a way to to make it viewable, I am all for that, whether that is lowering them or putting in higher bleachers.
Okay.
So if you I I'm looking at these high school bleachers and they're huge and they're block hole. We're gonna get rid of those to put in new. I don't see that happening.
I mean, as far as the dugouts.
Yeah, I just don't see that as a viable, I I agree, it'd be nice if that there was some thought about that ahead of time, wasn't it? Is that the softball ones aren't gonna be as big? Like, I mean, they're a little bit smaller and even the expense of those I don't know, I don't see it. So I think just this just made my, I think that your thoughts are, you're right there. Um, but I'm thinking of the actual like players. Obviously, everybody agrees about the the softball. I don't really care about the matching, but we're gonna have some expense if we have building trades class do it or whatever, volunteer. So to me, it's like, let's just, while everybody's on board, do it and then look at the other.
And he has not committed to figure something.
Um, but but maybe then like there's another effort through something else that we could get behind or some safety money or something we could. I don't know.
If you have both sides be shingle roofs, it's and if assuming the help, the class um it'd be cheaper and they match.
Well, that's not gonna, it's just not gonna last as long.
Can we apply the same argument to baseball dugout right now, hearing that a replacement or a lowering of the dugout would be cost prohibitive? So sounds like we've got those dugouts for baseball long term. We don't put a metal roof on them if they're gonna last longer.
That's part of the idea of raised.
Yeah, I like.
It just seems like.
Plan as it's presented, but then I'd like to go back and look at raising the seed, we've talked about that for years. It's retainer wall, it's fill and it's a concrete pad.
I don't say it's probably. Go that route, then we're making the long term plan where I don't feel like anybody's come to us and said this.
That's been discussed over there, I remember sitting there with booster people and parents discussing that fifteen years ago. It's not like we just invented that plan tonight.
Who do you want to come?
I I would love to to talk to Mr. Hensley, have we talked to your high uh and high school coaching staff? Um, has Mr. Benedict had input on this? I just, it doesn't feel right to me to approve it in in this way.
Frankly, that discussion that I just brought about raising the seating, that was discussed when that concessions building was built over there, you know, we had no concessions, we had no restrooms and that was phase one. And then seating was supposed to be phase two, well, everybody graduated and nobody.
So wait, what was phase one, the bathrooms?
Yeah, there was the, there was, there was no concession stand over there, there were no bathrooms over there. Within the bathrooms is a concession stands. And that was a parent slash booster plus slash school district project fifteen years ago.
Right around the same time we were gonna build a new junior high.
Yeah, yeah, and then the next plan was to do something to elevate seating or pad and put some portable bleachers in there. Never happened.
To play devil's advocate, if we were to change the plan tonight, for example, switch from metal on the boards to shingles, we could lose donations from the boosters since there's not as much money going as originally planned. Obviously, they've put time and thought into this, so. Um, what was the timeline on this, I know it's after junior high softball, is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Started, so. Yeah, and I totally understand your point, Jeff. Um, I know that softball has been ignored for many, many, many years. Um, this is uh, I figured you'd get something. And it goes further than just softball to baseball, I mean, like Sunny said, it goes to all the other sports that have a lack of funding, so to speak, cuz they're not a major sport, so it's one of those things, is where to, where do we start, where do we stop? And it's a tough call, so. Totally understand all sides of it.
Can we, can we reach out to the community, those local contractors, people that do this work and and like, what's the process for something like that?
It was like in kind donations?
Yeah. Not for, sorry, let me be clear. Uh, not not for the plan that we have now. The the dugouts, I'm I'm just talking about the seating and like somebody bring in some dirt or whatever, I mean, it's it's not gonna be cheap, but we had some people that were local.
So I think that we've already got it figured out where we're gonna have some volunteers do some some demo work on the existing and then we'll the money that we'll capture back on that will put back into the project. Um, you just need to be careful with regards to to who can volunteer and and who can and things like that. But yeah, with as far as the next phase or something like that.
I just like, we have like corporate corporate partners and.
Yes, we have corporate uh partners and Mrs. Bryson mentioned today in our directors meeting that she's becoming more involved with the the corp- corporate partnership with regard to the social media pieces and advertising with that.
Some fund some fundraising, like a, you always see like a little thermometer.
Well, and and the the generally speaking, the the Bulldog Open will have some sort of a target added, they didn't necessarily this year, but the year before it was for the fans and the gymnasium and things like that.
Jeff, I have a good point, this this plan here was created with input from.
Well, I know that Mr., so since I got here, that Mr. Hensley's been talking about
Okay.
The softball dugouts, but um my assumption would be is that um I know that he and Mr. Mills and Mr. Benedict are in on it, as far as the replacement of of roofs, I I don't I don't know if he's talked to Coach Philip over Dee Philippe over or not on that, but with I would I would certainly hope that he's discussed the logistics of that with Mr. Heimel, but as far as knowing every conversation that's went on, I'm aware of that.
I think just because of the number of organizations they've gotten involved in helping fund this, my guess is there's been considerable conversations.
Okay, so hold on, just so I'm clear, you're okay with removing this and then may maybe waiting and seeing about the twenty five thousand for the roofs, like, if we're gonna do long term, like, I'm I'm kinda confused, like, are we not okay?
I am a hundred and ten percent on board for the softball component of it. My point is I don't believe this addresses the need for baseball and I think twenty five thousand dollars if we're going to be spending that money regardless of whose it is, that in in order for me to feel good about it, there should be a little bit more thought put into it and what is the longer term plan? Is this the most pressing need for baseball? Is it, are we just doing it because the shingles need replaced, wait a second, you're that that doesn't make sense, if we can get, instead of spending twenty five thousand dollars, can we have with minimal expense, can we replace the shingles? That that's my point is to say, hey, it's not a good fan experience. And we talked to coaches about it, which I don't believe we have, um well, and it doesn't address the longer term issue of is there a consistency across all sports, whether it's esports or whether it's volleyball or soccer, i- is there that consistence consistency of experience to that, and I I don't see that in this.
Jeff, I think the reason that the baseball component is in there is because the shingles do need to be replaced, this gives us a uniform look. But I think most importantly to these volunteer groups that are chipping in money Bulldog Open and the boosters, it affects both baseball and softball. And that's an easier sell to them and creates more willingness for them to get involved than if it just turned as one sport.
Then why isn't it equal? That there would be a.
Because it doesn't need to be, because softball is in significant disrepair, whereas baseball is not.
I I but it is, I I mean, there, have you been in the baseball dugouts and?
I've been in neither, but based on the fact that the softball dugouts are leaning and the baseball.
Again.
Not, that makes me think that the softball dugouts are in.
Like the final equal.
That's what I that, well, I know a hundred and seventy two or a hundred and seventy, where it was and twenty five is nowhere near that, yes, they need to be structurally sound, obviously, but there is a really good plan here for softball. What is that plan for baseball and whether it's bleachers, whether it's a metal roof? I don't feel like it.
I don't know if you think it is, go ahead, Becky.
Like, I'm I'm, when I think of equal, and again, I have a daughter that plays softball, so I feel like I need to be.
Yeah.
Obviously, I'm not or in softball, anyway, so you guys have amazing nets and I know they might have been donated, you've got better equipment than softball. We finally got pitching machine, but that's cuz we had to raise money for it and we did have some donations too, but I'm just saying, I don't like, when you say equal, like, I totally get what you're getting about the the twenty five thousand, I I agree with that one thousand percent. But I do not agree that baseball and softball have been equal equally funded.
Yeah, I I don't know that. Yeah, I I don't know that part.
I I I would agree. In fact, I mean, you and I briefly chat about this, that I I have actually been very surprised and I have no connection to baseball or softball whatsoever. But I've actually been quite surprised that type that softball hasn't that the the inequity hasn't become a Title IX issue because. Based on what I hear about softball, and again, I don't know this for a fact, but based on what I hear about softball is that it is a significantly. Um lower quality player experience. That Title IX protects our sports, that if if we're giving our boys sports something, our girls sports need to be right there.
Finally just got a fence. An outfield fence that you don't because of safety. We didn't have a fence. Yeah, and our fields, like we don't get the bulldog emblem on there for home games, like we don't.
So I and so I think like when I look at like I almost feel like this is the amount of money we need to spend on softball. To bring it up to the level of baseball.
Yeah, I'd agree. The other thing is we ask, what's the long term plan at baseball? I don't wanna those dugouts other than the roofs are in good shape. I don't wanna spend a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars or be more than that next year to replace perfectly good dugouts. And lower than when we can spend the same money, raise the seed and help both sports.
So thi- this is what gets me, Jeff, and I I know a hundred percent where you're coming from, because I know your art. But this this picture to me is like what keeps I keep just staring at like that and then that. Page forty six, that's where all the photos are. And like it's just like. Smacking you in the face between the two. So that's the first base dugout, the boys field and or s- yes, first base and then third base at the softball. Uh sorry, I'm zoomed in on the picture. Uh would be like in the bottom third of the page in the middle. It would be number six. I just kept zooming in and zooming in and zooming in. Like when I look at that, I feel like it's hard to make that argument.
What do you mean? Well, it the picture was a li- little bit further back. You'd see my point.
I understand your point, like the the view for the spectator. But to the point of uh Becky and Justin and maybe Sunny as well, like the player. Experience like that just hits me in the face, so. Uh that's where I can't get over.
We don't disagree that there's a need for softball and I'm I fully support that, but.
I think where we're disagreeing is that. I'll speak for myself, that this amount of money for softball brings it up to the level of baseball. But I think what you're saying is you wanna be able to spend that amount of money on baseball.
Oh, no, that's not what I'm saying. What I am saying is that, hey, if we're gonna spend any amount of money, whether it's ten dollars or a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars. We need to make sure that that is part of the long term plan and. It doesn't feel like that. I think it absolutely is for softball. Does it make it viable? I mean. That fence looks really, really short.
Jeff, what if the what if the plan was like bring it up to this place now with this? And then like look at it like. You can't say, uh I don't know, like baseball and softball is like the complex. Right? So like now we're like bringing them both up. We're gonna make some field improvements in softball. Now they're, you know, probably throughout the conference. I don't know the high school, but I'm guessing probably not the best. So so I'm not trying to make an argument there, but but bring them both up a little bit. And then from there, like address like the baseball softball complex. Maybe some of that's more equally spent on the fan experience or like that experience together versus like this bucket or that bucket. To me, to me, that makes sense.
So I don't have any experience with metal roofs, but can a metal roof be taken off and be reused?
Really good question.
For shingles, you can't.
I I don't know if you can even get a better shot at than your new shingles.
The other thing is, is I mean, I I don't I don't I don't think those those dugouts are probably going anywhere, right? So I mean, that's that's the thing is that I mean, we we can just throw some shingles on and and replace the delaminated and the the missing shingles. Um the the thought process uh for those guys when they were talking to me about it was that, you know, that's a probably a thirty year solution is is. The roof on that. So as far as as you know, taking them off and but but we're probably not gonna move those dugouts anywhere. You know, Jeff had mentioned, even if it's a maybe JV baseball field at some point in in its career, which would be fine um there, but. Um so, you know, the the I wouldn't worry about taking taking it off and and reusing those, so.
I think at first, when I saw the number for the roof, I was like, wow, that's really expensive. I guess in my mind, I didn't really comprehend how big. Those actually are. So I'm guessing that's probably like a standing seam versus just like your. That stuff's probably not that expensive.
Are they even the same size teams? I'm sorry. I don't know.
Softball dugouts are smaller.
Yeah, we don't have as many play and we don't have.
The new ones will be bigger.
That that could be temporary too.
What if we get great seating?
But it is hard to see.
We got we got the player experience and we got the fan experience, right? For the player experience, I think. It would probably be good. For the fan experience. We've got fan experience and issues everywhere, right? We've got. You know, for one of the for the larger school in the conference, we have mediocre facilities at best. It's sad, that's what it is. Um and I think I think long term, we address the seeding there. I think. We address the seeding. That's equitable for both sides and it solves a problem we've had for years. And if we're gonna spend more money. Because of. You know, the experiences that's. Clearly, we're not to do in fields, it sounds like. Frankly, if we ever turfed any fields in the district, those would be the just those would be the fields to turf, because every spring. They're underwater and we can't start baseball and softball on time. Frankly, they're probably more important to turf than any other field we have, but.
Why, you know, if if it's twenty five thousand dollars to baseball. Okay, instead of spending it on roofs, could you turf around home plate? Do you turf in the infield? That's my point is like. Hey, if we only have twenty five thousand dollars to spend, where's the best place to do it to make a long term viable? That's that's why I'm saying, what is the long?
I think that we we maybe we're all misunderstanding your point, so I I hope that you didn't think I was. Thinking wrong. I know where I know now where you're coming from, so um yeah, maybe just maybe we're just more involved in that too. I would like to know more.
So I think what I'm hearing is um that maybe we wanna make a motion to um. Move forward on the on the softball project. Um and then ask Kenny to revisit the idea of the twenty five thousand dollars that we would be spending on the baseball dugouts. To determine um is that really the best use of money? How based on coaches, based on on Hensley. Is there a better option for that money that might either improve the player experience that might not be matching roofs roofs? Or perhaps something toward the.
If the if the organizations are still wanting to do it.
So I have I have one one more thought. I think we're seeing this from all angles, like you know, uh. You have a contractor over at your house and you're getting a bunch of work done and and you got a price. You're like, hey, what about changing out this light fixture? And you get a little bit better deal because they're already on site. I feel like if we come back later, oh yeah, we are gonna do the roof. And then we've got a pretty good, seems like when you it looked like a big number to me, but when you looked at all the other competing bids, uh the one that we're going with, like that was. On the very low end, are we gonna end up spending more later to do what we're ultimately gonna do? That's my concern. Like if we're gonna do it and then maybe find money or or interest later, I'm for that too. I just don't wanna miss out on something, so.
Well, we're gonna have Matt and and Doug here on September eighth, so. Um if we wanna approve something different on September eighth, we probably can still wrap that back in there would be my guess, Kyle, to to your point, so. We'll go from there. So let's just approve the softball.
Is that what you wanna do or do you wanna table this?
I think we're.
Yeah, but I don't want to Kyle's point. I don't wanna spend thirty five thousand dollars later to do the baseball roof.
I mean, we'd be tabling that part of it too.
September eighth, we're gonna have those guys here anyhow, so. No, I'll have Matt talk beforehand and come back.
Their long term plan.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I think you're gonna find that the long term plan is right now. Put the put the metal roofs on the the bleachers and then we'll look at the seeding experience after the infields are done. And the the gym floor is done and the the track's done, keeping in mind that our core function is classrooms. But that's that's just my guess. So we'll bring them here on on September eighth and and have a conversation around that. At that point, I think that if we wanna add to this, that's not gonna have started yet. So we could still get the economy scale that you're talking about.
We're not missing out on a deal.
Um, okay, so I I I think.
On the other hand, they got to go to the booster clubs and say, oh, the board's not sure we're doing this. Should we wait on the whole thing?
No, I wouldn't wait on the whole thing. I mean, we've got we've got a small window. Well, that's up to you guys. We've got a small window for this. Softball thing between the end of softball and then when when you know it's lining up the demo and then when the when it's gonna get cold. Um to make sure that it's ready for.
Prove the whole thing and then thirty days from now, pull the plug on twenty five if we need to, rather than try to add it back in. Because in the meantime, we gotta go to the other groups and get their financials worked short up.
You're approving that tonight without their support.
No, they.
We don't know. Does he know for sure that they're they're gonna approve that?
With the roofs? Yeah, yeah. I mean, it's not absolutely official, but every indication is correct.
I would feel better in softball and waiting, but it's, you know, two weeks, two and a half weeks.
If we if we wait on this, like if we don't approve the roof tonight, we have to go back to boosters and all these people and say. We haven't approved the roof. Are you still okay with your donation?
Yeah, I mean, there's gotta be some sort of a conversation before they were cut a chat.
Everyone has to go back to him and say, oh, now we've approved it.
Right. And then I'm thinking like in two weeks. Oh, by the way, actually, we are gonna approve it.
I can see both sides. I mean, they may also appreciate the fact that we're giving it so much thought. And we may ultimately, at the same point. I've never talked I've never talked to the boosters though either, so I don't know.
I need to make a motion to table the.
No, just make a motion to approve the the base bid as presented at.
The one seventy two five hundred. Okay, superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approves a low bid for the softball dugout project submitted by Barbara and Deatley in the amount of. One hundred and seventy two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Um, do I have a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so all those, uh no, sorry, Sarah, this is gonna be a roll call. We are voting on um just the softball dugout project um as proposed for a hundred and seventy two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Is there any conversation or discussion before Sarah calls?
I think it is gonna be a problem. We go to the other groups for funding. I think it's a little confusing. Having served on those words, I think. I've been sitting there scratching their heads wondering what's going on.
Kenny, are you a good communicator? You communicate that really well. Thanks. All right, Sarah. Rock.
Yes.
Severns. Bannister.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
McComb. McMurray. Yes, and then we will um bring back at the next meeting the other piece. Thank you. All right, consideration and passable approval of contract for chief's business official.
Um, yes, we've got Dr. Chris Kaler um in the in the peanut gallery this evening. After after interviewing uh with with our committee of Mr. Mills, Mr. Benedict, excuse me, Mr. Benedict, Mr. Martin, Dr. Bagby. Mrs. Northrop and myself, uh debriefing um to to a great extent and checking references. I'm pleased to present to you a two year contract with Dr. Chris Kaler to serve as our CSBO for Mohammed Seymour C U S D three. Uh Dr. Kaler brings experience as a uh the director of business services for the last two years at Rochester. Um three A. Prior to that, he served as a superintendent of schools at Moreau Forsyth. Uh prior to that, he was uh a couple different had a couple different principal positions um at Moreau Forsyth and then prior to that, uh principal at. Roanoke Benson, so um he also finds pleasure in serving as an adjunct professor. And uh we uh look forward to adding him to our team um on October first, if approved.
What are your thoughts on baseball dugouts?
Can you come up with a way to find money?
That I wish I could do. We're actually in the middle of a huge construction project, so. We're wrapping up a twenty seven million dollar project right now.
One day, one day.
That's right.
How do you feel about coming up with about a hundred million dollars? Doesn't affect the tax. And keep and 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 nobody goes to jail. We can't have that. Before we terrorize and we ought to approve in my.
Uh, the superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve Dr. Chris Kaler as the new CSBO for Mohammed Seymour C U S D. Number three, do I have a motion?
Move to approve this person.
Have a second?
Second.
Oh, boy. All right, Sarah, let's do a roll call, please. Severns.
Yes.
Bannister.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
McComb.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
McMurray. Yes, congratulations.
Well, get us get a photo here.
I thought you were just a public comment like waiting.
I should have moved you up to the top. I'm sorry.
Welcome.
I didn't think about that. Thanks, Chris. Um, okay, closed session tonight.
Say anything?
Do you wanna say anything?
You know, it's funny, what I was thinking is when I was listening to the first all the teachers, and I'm an elementary teacher by grade, I was a first grade, third grade, and fourth grade teacher. And all of them had these this was their hobbies. I realized since I've had kids in travel sports, I haven't had any hobbies. Basically, working following my kids around to travel sports is all I really do. So four dogs, two kids and. We've been all over the place for softball, volleyball, soccer and basketball since they've been in travel sports. That's what we do. I've got one is gonna be a sophomore at Illinois State and one is a junior at Moreau Forsyth.
Uh a closed session is necessary tonight for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees. Is there a motion approved to go into closed session for that for those reasons? Thank you. Is there a second? Okay, a roll call vote to go into closed session is needed at this time. Um, we will not anticipate coming out of open session to or out of closed session into open session to conduct any further business. Um following closed session, let's do a roll call vote, please. Bannister.
Yes.
Jordan.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
McComb.
Yes.
Rock.
Yes.
Severns. Yes, okay, we are going to head into closed session. We don't anticipate any more business, so we will turn off the YouTube feed and take a quick break. And then I'm back and get closed.
Zach, can you fire up?